Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, February 24th, 2025. The time is 6:01 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
Acting, excuse me, Acting City Attorney Pettish.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Shertliff shall be joining us online, but he will be a few minutes late.
Okay. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our commission meetings for February 5th, 2025 and February 10th, 2025 were received. Any correction comments, commissioners? The minutes withstand as submitted. Proclamation. City of Helena proclamation. Whereas on January 2nd, 2025, Helena citizen and former captain in the Army Nurse Corps, Diane Carlson Evans, was awarded the Presidential Citizen Medal in a ceremony at the White House for a life of service to our community, our state, and our country. Whereas in early 1983, after her discharge from active duty military service, Carson Evans began her mission to be a voice for women veterans, and she embarked on a campaign to establish a memorial to the women who served in Vietnam on the Washington Mall. And after a 10-year battle to secure, uh, to secure women a place of honor on the mall, the Vietnam Women Memorial was dedicated in November 1993. And her book Healing Wounds 2020 chronicles this story, where Evans, where Carson Evans went on to serve as the president and CEO of the Women's Memorial Foundation in Washington DC for 30 years. Whereas her perseverance and determination to establish the memorial and serve on the Women's Memorial Foundation was just the beginning of her life of service to veterans. And she has been a motivational speaker at national, state, and local organizations advocating for veterans and giving voice to the role of women in wartime service. And she has participated in a myriad community organizations and nonprofit boards of director. And whereas Carson Evans worked with Major Daniel John E. Pendogras, U.S. Army Retire, in a campaign to establish the Veterans Center here in Helena. And in Pendogras' words, "It took six years of relentlessly facing and overcoming obstacles that continuously challenged us, but we were finally successful, and it has helped so many veterans in our community as well as saving many lives." And whereas Christine Hanna, author of the New York Times bestseller, The Women Consulted, Carson Evans for her expertise on Vietnam and women in war. And together, Carson Evans and Hanna were future guests at a sold-out event at the Helena Civic Center in summer of 2024. And whereas Carroll College Play Director Chuck Driscoll invited Carson Evans to be a technical advisor to the production of Piece of My Heart, which portrayed four women in the Vietnam War. And Carson Evans had earned honorary doctorates from several institutions of higher education, including Carroll College. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Wilmut Collins, Mayor of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim February 24th, 2025 as Diane Carson Evans' Day. Throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Helena to recognize the contributions of Diane Carson Evans for her life of advocacy to honor and serve the community of women and men who have paid the price of defending our freedom. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 24th day of February 2025. Wilmut Collins, Mayor, Clerk of the Commission, Dianne Claiborne. Diane.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And thank you for your service, Mayor Collins, and your wife Maddie, who is Army Nurse Corps as well. And I was told I could say a few words, but that's kind of dangerous because I never say a few words. But I will tonight. First, I want to thank you, Mayor Collins, and commissioners and staff. And for this great honor, I accept it as I accept all of my medals and awards that I have received for my work on behalf of my sister veterans, because it's for them. It's they who deserve the recognition and honor and whom I fought for, for that recognition. And I want to thank the couple from Clancy, Montana, who started a grassroots movement nominating me for the Presidential Medal of Freedom. And they gave me no choice. They just came and told me they were doing it, Donna and Ron Greenwood. And it went viral, and several thousand nominations went to the White House. Many of those were from the American Legion, the VFW, the VVA, and all those wonderful veteran service organizations who fight for benefits and lobby to protect our veterans every single day. And we need them now. So I want to thank all the people in the room tonight who came to be with me. My friends, veterans, and so many people who have come forward to, after all these years, to recognize the enormous contribution of women who serve our nation. Yes, we were, we went through the mud and the blood. We have sacrificed our lives. We have sacrificed our time away from family to serve our country. And we have done it for centuries when now I have to stop because I might talk too long. So I just want to make sure that I've that I've expressed my deep gratitude. It was a long time coming, and it was a hard battle. Washington DC, everything is hard, right? But I was naive. I was a farm girl from Minnesota. I didn't know what I was doing, except that I was not going to give up. Thank you again. Thank you, everyone.
Commissioners, you want to say a few words? Okay. All right. Well, we can all just go across the hall. We have cake and cookies and water there to continue the reception. And then I'll, we will take a seven-minute break to enjoin you while you eat that cake. Consent agenda, one motion. Consider the submission of Capitol Transit fiscal year 2026 request for Montana Department of Transportation, 5310 TransAid Funding of $160,771. Consider approval of the annual update to the transportation coordination plan between Capitol Transit and community departments. C. Consider authorizing the city manager to sign and submit Capitol Transit, Montana Department of Transportation, 5310 Grand Package Request electronically. Commissioners? Okay. Do we have any public comments on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move that we accept the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
You're muted.
Commissioner, we'll come back to you in just a moment. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can actually hear Commissioner Shertliff. He's just coming through the wrong speaker. So Commissioner Shertliff, aye. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion carries five to zero.
Commissioners proposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received a request to reconsider, or to rehear, I should say, a variance request from owners by the name of Pinto. It was a vote we made on the 27th of January. And they've asked us to reconsider because a document was received that we were unable to see before the meeting. So I would like to see if there's consensus from the commission to place the item on an agenda to rehear. And if possible, if we could have that be focused on any new information that was not heard in the original variance request. But I see that Deputy City Attorney is waving at me.
Mayor and Commissions, I just want to clarify the process. So we would need to do a motion to reconsider, and then we would hear the matter again. And that could be held on the same commission, at the same commission meeting.
Okay.
In that case, thank you, Deputy City Attorney. In that case, I would like to make a motion to rehear it at perhaps a different meeting, because I believe that the people would like to be here if possible.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner. So yes, we would have to put out notice for that motion.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. I'm fine.
Mr. Mayor, I'm fine. We've had reconsiderations on sidewalk variances before. And I've, I'm willing to hear the reconsideration again. I will say, I think it, if there is new information, that would be helpful. But I'm open to hearing the reconsideration.
Commissioner Shertliff, you have the floor. Uh, we can't hear you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, Commissioner Shertliff, I can in fact hear you. I'm trying to get your speaker through the room. Commissioner Shertliff, just to confirm, you would like to second.
Correct.
You'd like to second what? To have it at a later date?
I'm sorry, Deputy City Attorney, just to make sure I understand. Am I making a motion to put it on a future agenda? What exactly am I doing?
Uh, no. So today would be more of just kind of
Consensus.
Yeah, just a consensus to do a motion at a later date. So we would do, yeah, later date, we do a motion. Then we do a consideration of the matter if that motion were to pass.
Okay. All right. Manager Burton? Would you put it on the agenda at a later date, and then we will do a motion and vote on that day?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
Mayor, I believe that we'll try and schedule that at the next regularly scheduled commission meeting.
You bet. Okay. Reporter of the City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So last meeting at, what was it, February 10th? I came before you with a resolution of intention that you passed that authorized the city to quitclaim some property to the Helena Regional Airport Authority. And approximately 30 to 60 seconds after that meeting ended, I was approached by a member of the Public Works Department who informed me that there was a stormwater conveyance on the property that we had not accounted for. And so we would like to ensure that that stormwater conveyance is protected if the city does indeed transfer the property. Earlier this week, we met with Jeff Wadey Camper from the regional airport. He didn't see a problem with granting the city an easement on the property if we were to move forward. So we would like, we were supposed to have a hearing today to consider that resolution. But with this new information, we will have to go back to do another resolution of intention. If you pass that, then we would have to do another hearing for that resolution. So we will bring that to you as soon as we have that easement figured out in terms of all the logistics of it. But I also wanted to clarify that we were having some issues too with public notice with the Helena IR. There was a couple of technical difficulties. It sounds like they had a cyber attack of some sort that pushed things back. So I don't have a specific date for you as to when we will be bringing that before you, but it will be at a future date.
Okay. Any comments? Okay, moving along. City Managers report.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Ryan Schwacard or Ann or Nancy Perry, you have the floor. Dianne.
Is Ryan logged on?
So Nancy, I'm on, online, but you're more than welcome to speak for us today. I'm taking notes.
Mr. Schwacard, could you repeat that, please?
Sure. Sorry about that. Nancy, since you're there in person, you're welcome to speak on our behalf. I'll just take notes.
Nancy, I apologize. Mr. Schwacard said you're wel, you're welcome to speak on his behalf.
I always like to talk. Okay, this is, you folks actually heard me for the admin. Is that enough? Or would you like me to tell you what's, what my? Mr. Mayor?
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with what you said during the admin meeting. So I don't know about the rest of, Commissioner Reed has a question.
I do. Thank you for the recommendation. We did get some comments about the recommendation, and I don't know if they had been considered by the HCC, and I don't know if it's best for you or for somebody else. But we did get a question about whether or not this would be an opportunity to address some of the complete streets issues in that area at the time that this, the stormwater drains are addressed. So I don't know who that question is best directed towards, or if HCC had received any information about complete streets when you were considering your recommendation. Thank you.
I'm aware of that email. Somebody forwarded it to me. It only had you folks' names on it though. So I don't know who else had seen it. So I've had a chance to think about it. I haven't discussed it, for instance, with the engineers.
Please.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I, I was made aware of that email earlier today. I haven't reviewed it. But if there, if that, whatever comes of that, if we need more HCC input on this, we'd be happy to look into it. At the moment, I can't really speak to it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Manager Burton?
Mayor, Commissioners, I would suspect that the complete implementation of the complete street standards would be very expensive, and I'd like some time to analyze what that would mean relative to the budget as well.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think one thing for the city manager, I know this is something that, I mean, I can't even imagine what that inlet is probably looking like today, because I know what it looks like in front of my house with all the runoff and, and snow melting. So I'm, if you can include in your analysis with staff, I mean, I would suspect this would push things farther back. So I just, if we can get an idea of what the timing comparisons would be beyond budgetary, I think that would be helpful.
Mayor, Commissioner, thanks. We'll do that.
Right. Regular items. Consider a resolution of intentions to adopt the Railroad District Neighborhood Plan by amending the 2019 City of Helena Growth Policy for its inclusion. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As introduced, I am Michael Alvarez, a planner with the Community Development Department. And I am excited to be bringing before you, for your consideration, a resolution of intention to adopt the Railroad District Neighborhood Plan by amending the 2019 City of Helena Growth Policy for its inclusion. So as a brief recap, the development of neighborhood centers is a goal set by the 2019 Growth Policy, specifically Goal 10. The criteria for choosing a neighborhood cent, the criteria chosen for picking a neighborhood center were accessibility, institutions, and mix of uses, placemaking opportunity, development and redevelopment opportunity, and planned infrastructure expansion. And generally, the Railroad District made a compelling case for every one of these criterion. So in the RFP that was constructed for this, the stated project aim was to create a vibrant, dynamic neighborhood center within the context of a larger residential neighborhood and to eliminate impediments to development while still ensuring quality developments. So the RFP had four responses. SCJ Alliance was chosen as the consultant to help us with construct this plan. They had previously worked with the city in writing the 2019 Growth Policy. So they took on a four-step approach to creating the plan. Task one was learning and projecting. Task two was considering choices. Task three, making a commitment, and task four, engagement and adoption. So that, this first task basically boiled down to policy framework and analysis along with the public engagement strategy. So for the policy framework, that's identifying and analyzing source documents. And the public engagement strategy began with two and a half days of interviewing stakeholders in the neighborhood. And this would lead to the initial understanding of the neighborhood by the consultant. That took place in November of 2022, where Bill Grimes, the SCJ Alliance principal, sat down with members of the community representing residents, business owners, local property developers, local nonprofits, the education institutions in the area, and local history experts. They identified 65 topics, and those topics were split into five categories. The character, economy, transportation and services, housing, and institutions. Up on your screen is also the eight source documents that contributed to this. Most importantly, up here, the 2019 Growth Policy, the Railroad Urban Renewal District, and Five Point Intersections Multimodal Traffic Study. They were all helpful, but those are sort of the three that this leans on the, the happiest. So task two was considering choices. And this involved taking that initial understanding of the neighborhood and combining it with an analysis of current land uses. And this helped SCJ Alliance develop the planning scenarios to bring back to the public at a storefront studio. The storefront studio took place in March of 2023. And this studio allowed SCJ Alliance to gain more feedback about the neighborhood. And an important tool in, for discussion here was to play priorities against each other. So recreation, prosperity, mobility, not necessarily in direct conflict, but just sort of highlighting them individually to, to push conversation. So really productive feedback came out of that storefront studio. So it had, it was well-attended with more than 70 attendees. You see the jam board that they created up on the screen there. It was also a time where city staff and the consultant, again, we also did this when they came into town for the interviews, but walked the neighborhood simply to, to get to feel and get to know it better for them. So what came out of the storefront was a brief, was this summary of planning issues. First and foremost, it comes up in other contexts as well, but is the North Montana Avenue, Helen Avenue, Lindale Avenue intersection, you know, malfunction junction. Also Boulder Access, the Commercial District's identity, vitality, TIF Board Investment, vehicle storage, the neighborhood character, at-grade railroad, at-grade rail crossings, not just North Montana, but also Roberts was, was heavily highlighted and national. Stormwater management, zoning and built character, and placemaking. So these all came as feedback. That planning scenario feedback was then combined with conversations with staff about implementation possibilities, and these led to the draft plans. And this was, the bulk of the project was going back and forth with the consultant on draft plans. The first thing the city received was a plan memo that generally discussed what the city could expect in the plan. And this is where SCJ first unveiled their understanding of the different neighborhood areas within the Railroad District. Originally, you'll see there highlighted in the lower left-hand corner in blue. That was considered the, the trolley district, which was eventually shortened and largely excluded from the district. So while the neighborhood plan sort of got introduced here, it was, it was, this was very early on and was refined further. The first vision statement was drafted, and the initial four principles around which the, the plan would be developed. Not going to read that first vision statement, because the final one is up on your screen here. It reads, "The district will grow as a neighborhood center, becoming a destination in the City of Helena with a strong neighborhood identity based on the district's historic core and unique mix of uses. It includes workforce housing, manufacturing, and the railroad after which the district is named. It will be a vibrant place to work, live, and visit with shops, restaurants, and diverse commercial businesses. It will be uniquely different from the city's other nearby destinations, downtown, Great Northern Town Center, and the capital area, mostly because of the contributions each neighborhood within the district will make. People will easily access the Railroad District by vehicle, on foot, and by bike with safe, convenient, and effective access." So up on the screen, we also, beyond that statement, we also have the focus area in blue. I call this the, the focus area, because this is the area with sort of the most intense development strategies associated with it. It's, it's a much gentler touch elsewhere in the, in the, in the neighborhood. We also see the neighborhoods there. The neighborhood concept is, is a powerful one for getting people to understand the plan as having smaller visions with a different look and feel depending on where you are in the district. So to expand on that, the Railroad District neighborhoods is sort of six neighborhood plans in one. So the Depot District is the Commercial District anchored by the Historic Train Depot. The Trades District is a live-work area on the eastern side of the district, south of the rail yard in pink there. The Six Ward, North and South, feature schools, parks, and housing. And it seemed, and feedback there was an especially light touch to, to maintain character of those neighborhoods. The Corridor District is a gateway to Helena area, and also the place of a potential conflict there between regional transportation and local access needs. And the Recreation District, which the plan wants to highlight connections to Memorial Park, Carroll College, and Kendrick Field. So the final draft of the plan is organized around five principles. Its structure, which are emphasize the district's historic importance, increase property utilization and function, expand and diversify the district's economy, address public infrastructure needs, and provide for public and environmental health. Its structure was filled out, and it does an excellent job of showing how previous work in the area and city, and this planning efforts, public engagement directly led to a in the area and city, and this planning effort's public engagement directly led to a set of goals and objectives. The plan discusses the implications of achieving these goals and objectives, which is a superb and somewhat unique exercise we welcome in this plan, as well as the recommendations which were all crafted to be implementable. Another feature that is in the appendix of the plan are the zoning recommendations. And what's nice about seeing these here is that the plan offers advice on how to achieve its own goal using the tool of zoning. So those draft plans, along with a healthy dose of city staff feedback, led to the generation of the plan. And this sort of falls under Task Four, Adoption and Implementation. So it's important here to, to pause and state that planning the Railroad District area posed some unique challenges that weren't totally obvious from the outset, one of which was working with all of the aforementioned source material. This plan didn't need to just assess an area and give broad recommendations because similar work had already been performed in the Midtown Sixth Ward U R D. Recommendations couldn't simply be transportation-based because the size and scope of the issues along North Montana and the railroad crossings has warranted their own study of plans and design work. So for this neighborhood plan to be successful, it needed to be much more actionable and finely grained than a neighborhood plan would typically be. And when a plan focuses more heavily on implementation, the potential for disagreements from stakeholders can rise. And so viewing that from afar, extra attention was therefore paid to linking implementation directly to public engagement and to source recommendations. So it's also why the plan considers the implications of its recommendations. Maintaining that, that through line both from previous work and directly from the public engagement and really reinforcing that in the plan. It, this plan does a really excellent job. You won't see that in most planning documents of this nature, and it's, and it's, it's very nice to see. Makes for a very strong plan. So issues, goals, and objectives. Goal number one, so the goals chapter starts off by talking about what specific issues were brought up by the community. So the reader knows the intent of why each goal and objective was made. So it starts with the issues, then it matches them to, to a goal. So goal number one, the Railroad District optimizes its historic and contemporary ties to the rest of Helena. And the objectives associated with that range from the promotion of arts and branding to exercises in preservation and the programming of events in the area. Goal number two, the district is the safe place for all, whether they're running a business, living here, or visiting. And the objectives associated with that range from making streets safer to travel, to enhance code enforcement and community watch programs. Goal number three, the district's transportation system reconciles regional mobility with local access needs. And specific objectives here align with increased and safe accessibility to, from, and within the district. Goal number four, the district's neighborhoods are livable and affordable. And this was matched with proven strategies as objectives to support it, like pedestrian infrastructure, mixed-use infill development and collaboration with community voices and developers. And goal number five, the Railroad District has a prosperous, unique, and identity-rich core. And here, the objectives focus on density, funding mechanisms, and coordination between businesses with one another in the city. So the implication section is broken into four parts: land use, transportation utilities, and stormwater economic development. The implications are not necessarily problems, but just a, a chance to stop and, I think, really walk the reader through, through digesting what is being recommended and, and, you know, have the reader think about what kind of changes that are being talked about here, how are they're going to feel in, moving forward. This was brought up as a question in our admin meeting last week was sort of low-hanging fruit. I believe it was Commissioner Dean who asked that question. So, so with the implementation strategy, I've added a staff implementation note. Having this plan be implementable and being able to, to hit the ground running with things here was, was a primary concern throughout the development process of the plan. So the implementation strategy, number one, adopts specific strategies to address community decay and vacant properties, guide TIF investment in form of Business Improvement District. So while the plan specifically mentions a bid, I will say there are other similar business organization models that might be easier for the city to implement without the assessment piece that a bid carries. What's really important down there is getting the business community working together and providing assistance where it's possible from city staff as, as we can, as, as that develops and, and takes shape, and just supporting the direction that the business community wants to go in. Also, the Community Decay and Vacant Properties Ordinance kind of goes in with implementation strategy number two, or I'm sorry. This, the Community Decay and Vacant Properties one is something that I think might work really well on the heels of the code enforcement discussions that the mayor and city commission are, are upcoming. It, it, revisiting that ordinance is something that a number of boards have asked of community development in the past, and, and we've heard some public response on. So I just think it, it can line up nicely with code enforcement. Create streetscape plan and design to match vision in the Depot District and Trades District, Robert Street Corridor, and the Lyndale Corridor, and the Helena Avenue Corridor. So this could be set as a priority with TIF funds, which can be devoted to planning efforts or this kind of work. The city previously, I should note, had design work done in 2003 by MSU, and it might be worth reaching out to MSU to talk to them about updating that or possibly taking it on as a project new. And then TIF funds could be used to implement those updated designs. That, kind of a fun document. I can make it available to you if you are curious about it. Prepare a non-motorized strategy to complement proposed mobility improvements in North Montana Avenue, design and construct a roundabout at Malfunction Junction, and install a Centennial Trail Crossing of Montana Avenue. So this, I write up on your screen that it has a funded planning grant. I suppose it is temporarily on pause while it's reevaluated for the railroad crossing grant. But that design work should be, is, is precisely what we're talking about here. While the neighborhood plan gives specific recommendations about maintaining accessibility throughout the neighborhood that's around it, a much larger and more pointed, a more specific set of public engagement strategies need to go around that, that very large project. But of course, this is talked about in this plan. So implementation strategy number four is to confirm Centennial Trail alignment through the district, design it in improvement. This is tied to strategy number three. How Centennial Trail crosses North Montana Avenue is, is very much dependent on the railroad crossing grant and design process. And then implementation strategy, number five here, update zoning throughout the subarea, particularly the, in the Depot, Trades, and Corridor districts. And Community Development Department is undertaking this program with the Montana Land Use and Planning Act because that act tells us we have to. And this will wrap up my presentation for today. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question and then one comment. On this, the last implementation strategy, strategy, have there been any of the pop-ups or the small groups for the Land Use Planning Act that we've done in other places, particularly in the Sixth Ward?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Forgive me, I'm not actually working the Montana Land Use Plan. It's consultant, this is a better question for Director Brink and Planner Ellie Ray. I've worked some booths for public outreach, but I'm, I'm not directly involved.
All right, that's okay. I'm, we can find out another time. Just really briefly, I wanted to just say thank you, first of all, for all the work on this. I also wanted to give my thanks to everyone in the neighborhood who, some of which we have in the crowd, who spent a lot of time putting this plan together. It is just such a testament to their commitment to their neighborhood because it has been kind of a long time coming, and I'm really glad that we're getting to this point. I will say that I am glad that this plan prioritizes preserving the historic character of the neighborhood and building on some of the things that make the Sixth Ward already a very special place. One other thing I wanted to note was that this is, really will just be the beginning. I know that we had a handful of public comments that were excited about the plan, excited that we will have some direction in solving some of the connectivity issues, but concerns about what kind of impacts do those improvements then have on buildings and businesses and streets that are already there. And I think the conversation is just getting started, so there will be a lot more opportunity to have those kind of opportunities for feedback so that we can preserve what makes it special instead of starting from scratch, including getting Centennial Trail across Montana into the Sixth Ward and getting that grade separation completed. So just very grateful and very excited to be moving forward on this plan.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Alvarez. I just, I want to echo that. When I first moved to Helena, my first job was in the Sixth Ward, and the change in the neighborhood in the last 10 years has been impressive. And the community members and everything they've put into this plan and moving forward and really developing that area while maintaining the character has been really cool to see. So thank you for the plan and for all the work from the staff and the community that went into it.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I'll echo my colleagues' comments. This is, I'll be supporting the adoption of this plan. It's very strong. It's very thoughtful. I think lots of input. And the neighborhood really appreciates the attention and the attention into the future. And, and, you know, I think we've seen from the comments that we received about the plan recently, and I attended a neighborhood meeting about a month ago, and I think one of the biggest concerns is, you know, the impact of access. And so I, I'm hopeful that there will be continued neighborhood input and attention to those access and parking issues. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Madam Clerk?
Oh, jeez. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, geez, you're lagging behind.
Good evening, Mayor Collins. Commissioners, my name is Scott Cromwell. I'm with Slate Architecture at 1470 North Roberts Street in Helena, Montana, 59601. We are about smack dab in the middle of the Sixth Ward. That's our office. It's right there. And I had to write some notes down because I like to visit, so I know I only have a couple minutes so that I would just be succinct. I love the Sixth Ward. I love it so much that I put my business there and I bought a building. And so I'm just very, very impressed with the document that was created by SCJ Alliance, of course, with Michael and Kyle, two, and city staff putting that together. So now I have the privilege to work there every day. I just think that's a wonderful opportunity for us. First, I want to just say that I agree definitely with approving the resolution for intention to adopt the Railroad District Neighborhood Plan into the 2019 growth policy. I think that's an excellent first step to be done. There is a ton of work to do, as you said, Commissioner Dean, and it's just the beginning. This is a roadmap. And so, very like that. Second, I think the, this document, the collaboration that happened, I missed the first session. I was out of town, but I did take opportunity to get into the March session. What a great time, great opportunity. It's a great neighborhood. People love it. You can tell. And so it's, it's just a wonderful do. This, this document is so jam-packed. I appreciate it. We put these together ourselves on the architecture side, and they did it, they just did it very well. This could not, of course, been done without your authorization, so I thank you very much for, for putting that together. Just a couple of things. I guess what impresses me most were just the five goals that were put together. The first goal, keeping and enhancing the neighborhood identity and, and history. And that identity, as we know, is talked about a lot in, in the document, is talked a lot about in our different sessions together. It is, it's truly a, a unique, a unique area. Number two, improving safety. Number three, improving access and connections. Number four, bolstering housing opportunities. We all know that we need housing. Housing is in great need in Helena. And supporting the business community itself. Couple extra notes I, I had, creating a BID until Michael just changed that. So, so whatever he suggests, I'm on board with to do. Extending, connecting the Centennial Trail, kind of the same thing, as we know, and I'll talk about it a little bit, just the connectivity. I think when we think of the Sixth Ward, it is right in the middle of Helena, and everything is just compounded right to it. And so there's a collision of many different opportunities there for us to consider in the future. The decay in the neighborhood, we talked about that too as our group, that there's a great opportunity. Maybe some folks just don't have the ability or the opportunity to do that, and maybe it just becomes a neighborhood get-together, and we help those individuals out to, to create that clean area.
Want to start wrapping up, please?
Okay. Concerns to bear in mind, the roundabout at Malfunction Junction, it is needed. We know that. The grade-separated crossing of Montana Avenue, we understand that need, but are concerned about definitely our neighbors. What does that mean for both men and argyle, argyle business owners? It will potentially get them in, into concerns. Robert Street Crossing needs to remain, and so does National, in our opinions. And zoning in the Railroad District. In my opinion, as a professional, it can't be compared to the Helena zoning district. It's its own unique, individual opportunity, especially just like what we had done for the Downtown District. It's got its own zoning standards, too. I think we need to consider that definitely. And finally, my last piece is just, there's mention of live-work buildings down there. This isn't that area. I think they definitely need to create those districts that Michael shared, and then have separate residential districts as well. And so the live-work probably doesn't work as well. So with that, thank you for your time, and thank you very much for your service to our great city.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment in line.
Commissioners, any final comments?
I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution of intention to adopt the Railroad District Neighborhood Plan by amending the 2019 City of Helena growth policy for its inclusion and to set a public hearing for March 24th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Madam Clerk?
Here's to hoping. Commissioner Shertlith?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Any final comments, Commissioners?
This meeting is adjourned.